All right, good evening. It is 6:30. I'm going to call this business meeting of the MSAD 15 School Board to order. We have a quorum. We are missing Sharon. She is feeling very unwell today. We hope she feels better soon. If everyone will stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Thank you. So, a couple of upcoming meetings to remind folks of. November 12th, we have Personnel Committee at 5:30 in the Dunn School Library, followed by Facilities and Policy -- a Facilities and Policy combination meeting at 6:30. So, this will explain this a little bit. This is a policy committee to which the Facilities Committee is invited to do some joint work around some policies we need to have that are really directly related to our facilities. So, we are doing a little bit of a atypical move there. We hope you join us. November 19th, there will be Finance Committee at 5:30. We'll be back here at the high school library. School Board Workshop to follow at 6:30, and I believe a tour of the high school? Yes? No? Okay. We will start, or somewhere in there will be a tour of the high school if you would like to come and have a tour of the high school. November 26th, we do not meet due to Thanksgiving. So, that is it for the calendar, and I would hear any -- consider any action relative to additions or adjustments to the agenda. Lauren?
Yes. I move that we are going to move the Agenda Item 6, Recognition, as well as the Agenda Item 8, A New Business, Hiring of a Teacher, to be the next two Agenda Items taken up by the Board.
Do I have a second on moving up some items that involve visitors? A second from Gary. Discussion? Does that make sense to folks? We'll do our recognition with visiting students. We'll do the hiring of the teacher. Then we'll pick up from there in order. I'll keep reminding folks where we are as we jump around, and then that also will get our public comment probably closer to the topic folks actually want to talk about. Oh, sorry, I got excited. All in favor? All right, we're good to do that. Thank you. So, without further ado, I will turn it over to Dr. Turner for some recognition.
We have a very big recognition section today that I am very excited about. Our first item is going to require a little shuffling. We have Patriot Players, which is our high school theater group here at the high school, is getting ready for their performance of Fiddler on the Roof. That is going to be on November 20th, 21st, and 22nd. Tickets available at the door, and they are here to perform one of their pieces. This is really, I think, the first dress rehearsal they've had. They haven't even gone into Tech Week yet, so it was so kind of them to try to be willing to show us something this early. It is a huge honor. So, we are going to ask the Board, we have reserved seats for you in the front so that you can see better. We're going to ask the Board if you want to. You don't have to, but if you'd like to take a seat where you can see better. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Walker and the team to put on this little piece for us. I will just let everyone know, we are going to have to cut the live stream for the performance part of recognition. We have to pay a license to use musicals such as this, and part of that license does not allow us to broadcast any parts of the performances. So, we will be taking a pause from our live stream just during the performance. When we come back to talk to the kids and the rest of recognition, it will be right back on. Oh, and while folks are moving, feel free, please enjoy the new chairs that we have been talking about for a long time. Huge thanks to Tom, Ray, Steve, who was here just a second ago, and the whole high school team. It is a lot of work to move all of this cafeteria furniture out and these chairs in, but I think it's going to be a huge addition to our theater experience here at the high school. So, I don't think we can say enough thanks to the crew for that. Would you like to say a few words, Mr. Walker, before they begin?
Yeah. Josh, to put -- my name is Walker. Hello, group. It's my first musical in recognition, last one in 2004. I've been doing plays since 1988, so I'm old. But I love this show. We're going to present to you the opening number tradition. We have 44 students involved in the play, 16 in the crew, and 28 on the cast. I have one from production team, this Emily Wallace, Adele Bell, and Val, my assistant, she's somewhere back there. Thanks. Oh, is she over there somewhere? Nope. And also Penny Collins is my postman, and she's got a lot of help. I don't know all the names, but we can look at the program together and get them all organized in two weeks. Enjoy the show. I know, I hope you will. Oh, use it. We're a pianist, I couldn't make it, so I'm running a computer over here, so any mistakes, blame me. But they're going to be awesome. Thank you. All right, lights out.
Or wondering, why are there not any stories about Minthi? You see so many about Hades and Persephone, but what about her? I wanted to bring a new perspective to these characters, especially Minthi, who is often misunderstood. Many pre-existing stories portrayed the relationship between Persephone and Minthi as an initial girlhood rivalry. However, I never truly agreed with this. So I decided that I would have to be the one to write out how I believe their story goes. I started writing my manuscript in my junior year and finished it this June. I'd write when I came home after going to school, after finishing my homework, after going to dance, and sometimes even after going to work. I'd spend so much time typing away on my laptop, but then it was finally finished. I then sent my manuscript to Barnes &amp; Noble Press, had some of my friends as advanced readers to provide feedback, and it was then approved for print, meaning it could be published. And my novella is now on sale online through Barnes &amp; Noble. Stories shape how we see ourselves and each other. And this journey has taught me that every story deserves to be told, even if you are afraid to be the one to tell it. Thank you for having me.
And we are so incredibly proud of Olivia. And what an amazing accomplishment. And it shows to her dedication, hard work, and creativity. So we will have her sign a copy of her book and for both the middle and high school and hand it over to our library specialists.
We're very honored that both the middle school and the high school will have author autographed copies for students to access and to know that a student that came through these same buildings is the one that wrote and published it. And a huge thank you to our library media specialists for coming out on a Wednesday night when I was like, hey, neat idea. Do you want to come spend your night with us? So thank you both for being here. Oh, and Olivia's parents are here also. Would you like to take a just a little wait?
Liv, if any board members would care to purchase a copy of your book, can we send it in to have it autographed?
Yes.
Does anyone have questions for Olivia?
Do you plan to write any more books?
Maybe. I have ideas. No, it's more of a hobby.
Liv, what are your plans for next year?
I want to go to college to study art history and Hellenic studies.
All right, excellent.
Thanks.
Did I steal your question?
Where do you want to go to school?
I want to go to school at the National and Cappadocian University of Athens.
All right. I think you might have known the answer to that. That's wonderful. Well, we can't wait to hear what's next for you. And I think I know someone who could bring in a copy of the book for me to have you sign it.
I think so.
I think so. All right, thanks so much for coming in. Well done.
Okay, and then our third huge recognition for this month. I'd like to invite Lisa Nedler to come to the podium. Lisa Nedler, I tried to come up with a nice way to say this, Lisa, but I did say longtime teacher at GNG.
I noticed that.
You know, it's hard to say that well, but experienced teacher. Lisa has been at the middle school and at the high school and was recently named by the Maine Department of Education as a teacher leader fellow. And so Maine Department picks a couple of people each year to be a teacher leader in a couple of different areas. They have to apply. It's a fairly competitive process. And this year they selected Lisa to be the teacher leader fellow in the area of career connections, which is such a huge tie to what she's been doing for us over the last couple of years as our advisory coordinator and our IB coordinator in teaching some career and college-ready courses here at the high school this year. So I wanted to invite Lisa and just talk for a quick second about her process and what that's going to mean for her for this year.
So I've developed over the course of probably the last six years a great interest. And actually, it actually goes back. I started a master's degree in adult education a long time ago. So there's always been a thread there. But about six years ago, I started really kind of diving into that career readiness for students and the pathways that they can take to get there. I worked with Hub Eight. It's the adult ed program in the Cumberland County area and was the first college and career access coordinator for Southern Maine Community College and worked there on campus at night after I worked here during the day. Then COVID hit and the funding went away. So I was back in the classroom, which I also loved all of my time in the classroom. A few years ago, Craig asked me to, Craig King, asked me to write an advisory program with some connection to the career standards that are in the Maine learning results. And it was just an opportunity for me to really get into that work and learn more about what's available to us. And evolving into the IB coordinator and jumped on an opportunity to teach a dual enrollment class to our students here at the high school through the University of Maine. They earn two credits to kind of figure out what their path is and where they want to go. And it doesn't have to be college. It's career exploration and development. So if they want to go into trades, they want to go straight to work, they want to do a gap year, they want to go to a two- or four-year college, we plan it all out. And it's such a fun and interesting class. So I saw the advertisement for this teacher leader fellow position, and it just felt like it was the right time and the right opportunity for me. I jumped on it because I'm passionate about helping our kids here. So it was a little selfish in that while I'm tasked with doing work for the state, I'm working for the students here in our community and as well as students beyond. So there are four teacher leaders fellows for the state this year that I work with. There's an arts integration teacher leader fellow, a civics fellow, a financial literacy fellow, and mine is career connections. They've actually decided that they want to evolve, that they want to have this position go for two years because by the time you really get into what you're doing, it's a year is up. And we're actually finding that mentors are very helpful in making the process smooth. So two of us will stay on for a second year while two will sunset after their second year this year. So I am meeting with people in all kinds of areas that are related to careers. On Friday, I'm meeting with the Maine Career Development Group. I've been with Maine Sparks. I've been with the Maine Development Foundation. I'm going to Educate Maine, which has all kinds of connections to extended learning opportunities in JMG and career exploration. I've met with leaders at DOE. I've made such amazing connections that I know are going to develop great opportunities for our students here while I work on projects that are going to be available to educators across the state. So it's five hours a week. It could be a full-time job. So balancing that here is a challenge sometimes. But it's also very connected, so it makes a ton of sense. So I'm just excited to help our students plan their futures.
Fantastic. I have to go check. Questions for Lisa about this role? Anybody?
We're super psyched to have Lisa representing GNG on the state stage.
I have one.
Teresa?
You said Sparks. Can you just tell me what that is? I don't know what that means. So Maine Sparks works with employers to, they do long-range goals to set up programming to help with, whether it's pipelines or pathways, connections, whether it's with colleges or with schools to get students ready. And it's not just students. It's anybody entering the workforce. But it's a connector to employment.
Okay, thank you. So the work you do in produce as part of this project both comes back to our students, but is also creates things that presumably schools use across the state.
That's correct. So one of the projects that I'm, that I'm, I have four areas that I'm thinking about working on, but two of them actually were grassroots here. So the middle school, through their advisory program, spent, they spend a month learning about careers and opportunities that are available to them. Each of the grade levels at the middle school has four lessons that they do over the course of a month. And it's culminated in a career day. At the middle school last year, we had over 50 presenters, and the kids had four different sessions, and they could pick which areas they wanted to go to meet people in different professions. So I want to make a playbook for other schools to be able to replicate and remember some of the finer details. I've been consulting with a woman in Camden whose children are in their 30s now. So she's kind of forgotten what it's like to be a middle, have a middle schooler. And so just reminding, like, the more structured, the better. And what does that look like in a career day? So just sort of like the tips and tricks of the trade to be able to replicate what we've built here and go out. A couple of other projects that I'm thinking about too.
I love Career Day, and I think it's great for the kids, but also has become a thing in the community where people are presenting at Career Day and comparing notes. And last year, I knew so many people presenting at Career Day that I had some FOMO and was jealous that I wasn't presenting at Career Day. So it's a nice opportunity to get community members into the school too.
It's a great opportunity for people to see the good work that's going on in our school. So it was a, it's a fabulous event. It's just, it's so fun to watch the kids and just the vast array of opportunities that are available to them.
Great. So please sign up for next year's Career Day and bring swag. If you just give away anything, they love it. Any other questions for Lisa before we let her get some dinner? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Congratulations.
All right, so for those following along, as we jump around the agenda, that completes item number six, recognition. We are going to jump to eight, new business A, to consider Sean, sorry, I did not practice ahead of Susi. Practice ahead of time. Sean Susie for a one-year-only first probationary contract as a teacher at the middle school.
Yes, I move that we hire Sean Susie for a one-year-only first probationary contract as a teacher at the middle school.
Second. Discussion? Discussion? But don't we hear the thing first?
Yep. So, sorry, we haven't nominated a teacher in a while. So Sean, why don't you come on down? Mr. Benoit, Riley Benoit and Ms. Daco usually are with our friends. Kristy, why don't you come stand so Sean doesn't have to stand up here all by his poor lonesome? They unfortunately were not. Mr. Benoit is out today, and Ms. Daco's husband is out of town. And I could not make her trot those little babies out on the night to be here. I told them I'd be happy to introduce Sean. And Ms. Lamro volunteered to be here so that he wouldn't have to stand there by himself, which we appreciate. So what you are going to see later in our agenda tonight is that Cindy Worcester, who has been an art teacher at the middle school for a few years now, retired in October. She had some, she decided to retire. And so we had the opportunity to go out. Anytime we're looking at sort of a mid-year retirement, we do try to hire a one-year-only if we can. We often cannot. But in this case, we had a fully certified, freshly graduated, and Wyndham's been trying to get him, if they could find a place, person come forward. And so we're so excited. As I shared in the agenda, Mr. Susie has both a bachelor's degree and a master in arts. He has a certification from the Maine Department of Education to teach art education K-12. He's been student teaching as well as long-term subbing at Wyndham High School for quite a while. He has a really interesting array of skills he was sharing with me around. You know, I was kind of explaining to him how we do our snow days and our remote days. And he's like, oh, well, that will work great because I've done some work with like 2D and 3D and digital, and that would work so great on a remote day. So it was exciting to hear those sorts of skills that he held. He also is a distance runner, and we're always looking for coaches. Not, you know, so just, he had a nice little, he had a nice little resume that we enjoyed very much. He was interviewed by a team at the middle school and selected as the top candidate and was willing to come on as a long-term sub. So he has been subbing in the position for the last two weeks, and he's still here. So we are so delighted that that is the case. So I am asking for the board's support in hiring Mr. Susie for this position at the middle school, in the art position.
Questions or further discussion from the board? I was just pulling up the calendar on my phone to verify. In just two weeks, I have already heard rumor of your incredible artistic talent rippling through the neighborhood. So very excited to have you, Sean. Fran?
I have a question. So how often do we hire one-year teachers? And is the thing in the continuity of, you know, the students going from class to class?
So sometimes we'll hire one-year-only teachers when we have teachers that take a year of parental leave. So we'll only have a position open for one year. When we have teachers leave mid-year, we will often hire it as one-year-only. That gives the candidate flexibility for a mid-year hire. It also gives the district some flexibility as we go into the next budget season, but also as we go into the next hiring season. So we can kind of have that flexibility to address it. It's a fairly rare occurrence that we have a mid-year like we do here.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor? Great. Welcome, Sean. Thanks for coming in and meeting us in person.
Awesome, nice to meet you.
Thank you. Feel free to step out, head home, because I know you have students in 12 hours. Thank you.
All right, we always like hiring teachers. And now we are going to jump back to where we would have normally been in the agenda, which is item five, to ask for comments from the audience. So we have continued to improve our setup here. We have a podium now. Step right up. Oh, and I know you know the drill, but just want to say at the beginning of public comment, if you can please state your name, the town that you're from, and if you see me waving at you, I don't want to interrupt you while you're talking, but it means you've hit three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Susan Fuller, and I'm from Gray. And I want to thank the Gray-New Gloucester School Board for this opportunity to speak this evening about a proposal that I believe is crucial for the future of both Gray and New Gloucester, reexamining how our two towns fund the local share of education for our students. The current cost-sharing formula has been in place for nearly 50 years. When it was first adopted, the property values in both towns were quite similar. However, as we all know, the past several years have brought unprecedented increases in property values, changes that no longer reflect the realities of the student population or the balance between the two communities. This outdated model has created understandable tension between the towns and made it increasingly difficult to pass bonds needed to improve our schools, enhance our curriculum, and modernize our facilities. What we are proposing is simple and fair, to move toward a per-student funding model. This approach more accurately reflects who we are educating, our children, rather than relying on fluctuating property values. There have been some misconceptions suggesting that this change is intended to make New Gloucester pay more. That is not the case. Gray's growth rate is significantly higher, and with several large developments already proposed, it is entirely possible that Gray could end up paying more in the future under a per-student model. This, the goal is fairness and sustainability, not favoritism. Many residents in both towns have expressed frustration that school improvement projects repeatedly failed at the ballot box. By creating a more balanced funding approach, we believe both towns will be better positioned to come together in support of investments that improve education, enhance the safety, and strengthen our shared community. Consolidated, efficient schools benefit everyone, the students, the taxpayers, and educators. This proposal represents the first step toward doing what's right for our children and for the future of both of our towns. I want to thank you all for your time, for your service, and for your commitment to our students. Respectfully, Susan Fuller.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate hearing from you.
Hello, my name is Judy Seminow. I'm in Gray, Maine. And I just wanted to touch base a little bit about the process that incurred for getting the petition sent to you. I know the last meeting I wasn't able to attend, but there was some confusion about how the process went. And I just wanted to make some clarifications that when we first started out to do the petition, we thought it was only 10% of Gray resident voting that we needed. But when we sent in the signatures, we were advised that it wasn't just Gray's numbers that we needed. We needed to include New Gloucester. So we were short by, I think it was 80 signatures. So when we sent our petition signatures in, Shanda had advised us that we were short and that we hadn't included everything. So we were made aware of that, and we advised her that we would quickly get the remaining signatures that we needed. And we did that pretty promptly, I think maybe within a week. We didn't need all that many. I think we only needed like 80 or something, and it was pretty quickly to get those. So we did go and get those, and we passed them in and let her know that they would be coming shortly. So those did get brought into that office. But then there was some confusion about, we needed to make sure there was no duplicates on those, in which we did make sure that they got sent back to a third party and got corrected. So I just wanted you to know that the process that we took, it was kind of foreign territory for us. And we kind of learned a little bit along the way, just like I'm sure you have in this process as well. So I just wanted to say I so much appreciate that you didn't throw those signatures out and make us start from the beginning. We really do appreciate that from all of you that did that for us. So the other thing is, is we want to make sure that there will be people chosen from the school board to be on the committee, one from Gray and one from New Gloucester. And then there will be two at large from each town. And all that we really ask is that you make sure that they're unbiased. Because what we're looking at here is, we don't need somebody that really wants one way or another. We want somebody that just wants to look at the information and determine what's the best avenue for both towns. So we would like to make sure that you do it on a basis that's not, so somebody is really set on not having this passed or whatever. I know there are a few people that didn't even want the signatures passed. So I think we need, excuse me, to be a little more conscious of that. We do like, we do want to recommend that maybe for the Gray person, that Jim Manzer be your representative for Gray. And the reason why I say that is, is I have seen Jim at a lot of these meetings. And Jim actually takes information. He asks a lot of questions, and he's not, he's very across the board with stuff. He's very open. He makes good decisions. And I think that he would be very unbiased. And I hope that you would recommend Jim for the Gray side. So once again, I wanted to say thank you guys for not throwing those signatures out. It does mean a lot. We worked very hard for those, so we appreciate it. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Judy. Very well done, three seconds to spare. You crushed it.
Hi, my name is Vincent Plangi. I'm a member of the Town of Gray. And I'm sure over the last several decades, the way that you teach your children has evolved and changed. And so as Sue states, I think this is a good time for what we're doing with the way the two towns work. We should be looking to evolve that as well. And as one of the members of the Town Council in Gray, we look forward to receiving the information from you, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent. Any other takers? All right. Well, thank you very much for your public comments. It was well considered, appreciate it. And let me just get myself reset here. Moving into old business, we're back on item seven, letter A, and looking for a motion on accepting the minutes from October 1st, 2025.
I move that we accept the printed minutes of the October 1st, 2025 regular business meeting as presented.
Second. Discussion? Anyone find anything in the minutes we need to look at? All right, all in favor? Beautiful. Next up is B. And now we're going to consider documentation received regarding the cost-sharing formula petitions with potential action to follow. So everybody should have received a few pieces upfront. Just a little recap, at our business meeting last in October, we had considered the petitions that came to us separately, asked the petitioners to bring those to a third party in order to validate the accuracy and that there were no duplicates and that otherwise, we considered that all one effort. We have received documentation in response to this vote from last time. And everybody should have had a chance to look at the letter we received from Britt, the Town Clerk of Gray. I also did have a phone call with her to just to walk through her process, verify that her letter was attesting that she personally was one who did the comparison. She did find, I think, four duplicates, removed those. The numbers still met the bar for the petition, for the statute. And now we are all caught up. So from there, I think what we would do is maybe get, I would entertain a motion on accepting the documentation provided?
I move that we accept the documentation provided by the Gray Town Clerk as acceptable evidence of a neutral third party, unduplicated count of petition signatures, and therefore meeting the statutory minimum voter signature count required to initiate the cost-sharing formula revision process outlined in Title 20A, Section 1301.
Second. All right, so discussion. Thoughts, questions? How are folks feeling about the process to this point? Do we feel like this meets what we asked? Questions, thoughts? Do we feel this meets the bar we asked? Frank, could you excuse your mic? No worries. I think you might have turned it off.
Is it on? I got it now, thank you. I went the wrong way. Okay. I think based on the requirement of the board that the signatures be verified and documented by an unbiased third party and seems to have met that, I think that at this point, we just need to move it forward for the next step in the process based on the state statute.
Thank you, Fran. Anyone else? Jim, are you trying to?
Yeah, I thought Ms. Seminow's background was helpful. I would have loved to have known that at the meeting, that they took into account, they only took into account initially the Town of Gray. So that would have, I think that would have made that discussion go a lot smoother if we'd have known that background information. But I'm glad I know it now. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so motion on the table then is we accept the signatures as passing the bar for the statutory minimum on initiating the cost-sharing formula. I think the only thing I want to add is we are asking, to me, this initiates in the motion states the process outlined in Title 20A, Section 1303. So I just want to be clear that maybe we're on the same page, that this will trigger that process. The petition also included some wording about a suggested outcome from the process. And I don't think that that's part of what we're authorized to do. We simply can initiate the process. Whether or not that results in a change or a per pupil is not ours to state. All right. All in favor? All right. Easy. Great. So now we've got some next steps in front of us. We will notify the, both towns to, through their council or select board, that they will be selecting two representatives to send through this process. We will, we also would authorize Dr. Turner, per statute, to, actually, and I don't even know that we need to say this, the statute, we're going to follow the statute. The statute states that Dr. Turner will, in her role as superintendent, identify a facilitator from the list maintained by the Department of Education as appropriate facilitators. It's our understanding that this is a fairly short list, but we would look to her to do that legwork for us. Is that, am I on the right track with folks? Anyone feel differently about this? Okay. And then the piece that we need to do as well is that, per statute, we would also, the school board will send a representative from Gray and New Gloucester. I would love to have some discussion on that tonight, to not hold up this process by saying, hey, everybody, think about it. We'll talk about it in December. If we could select our, if we were prepared to select our representatives, we could move forward, reach out to the towns, have some work done on identifying facilitator, and with any luck, hopefully get a meeting on the books of this group, you know, quite early in the new year, and not, you know, add any further delays on getting to, getting to the work. Are people prepared to have that conversation? Does that feel reasonable? Yep. We also could do it at the workshop. Fran?
That's basically what I was going to suggest, because the Town Council has to, you know, select somebody at their next meeting, and this was not advertised for tonight, that we'd be selecting anyone who wasn't on the agenda. So for us to take an action without being on the agenda, I don't think we can do that. But we can do it, you know, if we're on the workshop agenda for the next meeting. I just don't want any, you know, missteps, you know, as we go along. So that's where I feel it's not, you know, has not been stated on the agenda. It's not that I'm ready to go. It's just that it should have been listed. I think we had the discussion prior to the meeting, and I had suggested that it be put on the agenda, and it wasn't.
Yeah. We couldn't put it on the agenda because we hadn't voted on whether or not we were moving the process forward. So now that we've essentially triggered the statute with our vote, we know the tasks. We've all been reviewing the statute, I think, at length over the past few weeks. And a workshop, well, we could wait to select folks at a workshop. That is not a business meeting with voting items on it. That's generally not something we're voting at. I'm actually not sure if it requires a vote or consensus on who, I suppose we'd have to potentially put it to vote to say that's who we're sending. I would entertain opinions from other folks on moving forward with this discussion now.
Hi. I'm not sure, I don't know if it requires a vote or not. Statute doesn't say anything about a vote. It just says that the school board will appoint a member from each community. And I don't know of any kind of policy that we have in place that covers something like this, since it's only happened once in the last 20 years. So I don't know why we couldn't do it at a workshop. And I agree with Fran. I think, I think it'd be nice to have it on the, on the agenda so that the public knows it's happening. It might have, we might have had more comment tonight had we, they been aware that we were going to do that.
More comment in perspective of who we?
Maybe local enthusiasm about who they'd like to see, if they knew it was going to be on the agenda.
I hear you. I don't actually think that it's the public's job. I think it's up to us. I don't think we want to make this a...
No, I'm not suggesting that they have a voice in that.
Yeah.
I'm also not, I'm not sure that we need to actually vote on it. It may be something that we might want to ask an opinion by someone who has experience with this process, but I don't think, the statute doesn't specify that.
The statute actually does specify, I think. It states that the board will select the rep, you know, essentially, I think, each, the board has to select their folks, and it could be as pointed as the New Gloucester folks pick their person off of the board and the Gray folks. Sam?
That's what I was just about to say. The way I read it is one member of the District Board of Directors chosen by the municipality's directors. So it seems like the Gray board members are supposed to pick the Gray person, and the New Gloucester board member is supposed to pick the New Gloucester person. The mechanism for that is not outlined necessarily. We could caucus, I suppose.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. You know, I'd welcome discussion or suggestions, of course, from the whole board. We are one group, and then, you know, perhaps caucus in the inner towns. I was certainly prepared to work on this tonight, having read the statute over the past couple of weeks. Folks who haven't weighed in yet, do you want, are you comfortable working on this tonight? Or do you want to table it?
The next workshop is November 19th. Is there anything pressing that we, that's happening at that meeting that we couldn't do it then? Or for time's sake, do we need to move it forward faster according to the statute?
Yes. So delighted that you asked. We actually have left the agenda open for the board workshop, anticipating, not specifically selecting our members. I actually thought we might get after that tonight, but doing some education around what, what is this process? It's not going to be, we won't all, we'll put two people forward, but I think it's important that the board understand what's happening, what we're looking at, how, how does the statute work? We were hoping to maybe get a speaker more educated in the topic than us in that night. And then if we move forward with that, open it, of course, all our workshops are open to the public, but also say to the public, hey, we're going to learn about this process if folks want to come in and also learn about this process with us.
And then in the workshop, you know, if, if we wanted to, the people from Gray could chit chat and the Gloucester, and kind of figure it out amongst ourselves in that workshop, and however we, after the speaker, I mean, there's lots of opportunities to learn more. We don't know what that process is going forward, what our responsibilities are going to be as that person, if you're chosen. When, how many meetings are we going to be going to? What's that timeframe? How long does this span out? There's so many questions that are unanswered, so having some time to figure that out before the 19th and learn more about it then, I think is a good, good choice.
Okay. And I know Dr. Turner has a thought?
My suggestion to the board would be that we, that we pick this back up again at the workshop. As Penny stated, it's sort of planned as a topic anyway. I believe that the statute does not require a quorum vote of the board because of what Sam was pointing out, the municipality directors are the ones who select their folks, so therefore already isn't, kind of isn't a quorum of the board. However, what that gives me the opportunity to do is just go double-check that with our council, make sure that's correct. If it turns out we do need a formal vote of the board, we could announce, we could just switch this workshop out for a formal business meeting, and then we can, we can make it, we can make that announcement. My intention would be to announce that before the end of this week if we needed that, and otherwise plan to do it in workshop, because if we're not taking a formal vote, then that would be okay to do anyway. And then we can know for sure.
Fran?
I know we're not supposed to ask questions of the audience, but we happen to have. I don't know when the next Town Council meeting is, and if that's going to be on their agenda. And so, I mean, anything, I mean, it's not like, so if we knew that, we could decide, you know, if they're going to be meeting next week, we really maybe want to push it forward. If they're not meeting for a few more weeks and we have our other meeting, then you see what I'm saying? There won't be any delay.
Sure.
And second of all, I'm, I'm not sure the school board's involved in this after, tonight, after we select the person. I'm not sure we're involved. This is, this is the new committee's responsibility, not the school board's.
Correct.
So we wouldn't be involved in any understand, you know, we don't need any understandings or anything like that. We got the law, and we know what we're supposed to do.
Yeah.
And not do.
We, we don't have a role in it, but I disagree that we don't need to have understanding of the process, because we will be sending two representatives to, to work on this committee, and I think understanding what they'll be doing would be important for us to know. But then we, yeah, we won't have an active role
No.
in that process.
Right. Good. Okay.
From there. Do we, and I think Dr. Turner is just checking the upcoming town meetings.
I believe Gray Town Council is first Tuesday of each month. 18th or 19th, whatever the Tuesday is. I believe it's the 18th. Let me check. And it, and we also have to secure a facilitator, which is going to take some, from what I'm hearing from my colleagues who have done this in the past, that, that takes a while. So I don't know that we need to move our meetings up in order to buy those meetings, because the, securing the facilitators, I think it's going to take time anyway.
And we haven't even talked about the Gloucester selection.
Yeah. So I think we have the New Gloucester, thank you, Vincent.
Thank you. Sorry to cut you on your way out.
I think we have the New Gloucester calendar right here as well. And drumroll, it is November 17th. So all the same week. So I think it's perfectly reasonable for us to bring this up at our workshop with some more information. We'll plan to have a good old-fashioned caucus. That will be fantastic. And we will still be meeting the same week that both towns will have their next opportunity to meet, so I don't think we'll have lost any time there, and we'll certainly invite all of those folks to attend our workshop.
County Chairman? Perhaps maybe what we could get out of this time is get a sense of who would be available for being on this committee from this board. Who would be willing to serve or what have you. People do it all the time.
All right. Just for our, for our own knowledge, because it's exciting, even just show of hands, who would be willing to consider taking on this task? We're, we're just on the agenda.
It's a form of discussion. It's not a vote.
Right. But we'll just do it. Sam's right. I was just trying to bait him into talking tonight. I, I wanted to get him to talk, and I did it. So yeah, we'll hold this for our process. We're not going to split it up. We're going to be all in or all out. So we'll do this at our workshop. We'll learn more about what that entails, and we'll take it up then. Before we move on, are there questions folks have that you could give to me now that you would like to see us try to get answers for, or have, be part of the learning or the conversation at the workshop? Anything specific?
I think the timeframe, what our duties will be, how many, how many meetings that we might be looking at attending. Is it going to be what night, we don't, probably don't know what night of the week it's going to be. There's mostly, I guess, that. What's our time commitment going to be to doing it?
All right. Got it?
I have a question.
Fran?
Time committee of the committee members or time committee of the school board?
Committee members.
Oh, the committee members. Oh, okay. When you said we, I wasn't sure. Okay.
The two people that are chosen, what's our, what's
What their?
Their responsibility is going to be in timeframe?
Yeah. Anything else?
So I guess when this, whoever comes to speak to us, we really do need to find out, like, how long does something like this really take? You know?
Yep.
Because it's totally new. I mean, as this, they haven't done in 20 years. It's been a long time.
Yep.
Okay.
Minimum of one meeting. You will attend at least one meeting. I can almost promise you.
They'll be more than one.
But who knows? We don't know. We don't know. Okay. Anything else? We will work on putting that agenda together and finding out if we need to make that a business meeting or not, or if it's fine to simply caucus by town and put forth our representatives. All right. Thanks for that. And we're going to move on in the agenda to see, review, and discuss our school board workflow, excuse me, workflow document that Dr. Turner and probably team have been spending some time on. Just launching.
So we previewed this at the October 1st agenda. I have hesitated to make it public just because I think rare few can make sense of this other than myself, and I make Maggie and David make sense of it. But I, it is a tool we're using right now to organize the board's work, so we felt it was important to share it publicly. And so this is a live document, so, or it's not live, but it is, you'll notice that the stamp at the top has not only a date but a time, because the time's important. As things change and move, things are changing and moving in this, in this document. So for example, you'll see that as part of tonight's agenda, there were a number of policies that were listed out. Some of those policies, no changes were recommended, and so you'll see the strike through because we didn't need it, but it's there to remind me that we did look at it. So essentially, this is month by month. You see your first meeting of the month, starting at the left, moving through to the last meeting. You'll notice summer 3rd, Wednesday-ish, because they move around a bit. But it's just kind of mapping out that work as it moves through committee and to the full school board. This will change over time. This is our best guess what we're going to need to be doing in May and June, but as you are well aware, it changes often. And so the intention is that each time we send out a board business meeting agenda, this document on the website will be updated with the most recent. So I'm not going to update it daily, but we will update it once a month to the most recent information.
That's great. Questions?
Yeah. I think you answered this once before, and I just can't remember. The color coding. What's the color coding mean again?
It connects to our strategic plan. So if you, the, at the top of the document, there's a link to the strategic plan deliverables for '25, '26. Those colors match. So you don't necessarily need to know what a color means unless you're super interested, but what I might invite the board to consider is that when you see an item that's color-coded, it means we're making progress on our strategic plan deliverables.
So you couldn't have a key?
I, I could, but it was real long to start. There, there is a note that, that, you know, at the top there, it says workflow items are color-coded to align with the strategic plan deliverables, and if you click on that document, it brings up those colors and it aligns to what the goals are. But the document's already pretty long and complex, so I didn't add.
A screen problem. That's why I couldn't see it.
We got to work on that for you.
Other questions? This was a lot of work, so thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. I like, I know we have this information everywhere, and there's always a lot of balance between like, are we over-communicating? Are we under-communicating? How many ways are we saying it? As a, for visual folks, I like how this helps you track from meeting to meeting as we move through, and what we, also just as importantly, what we didn't get to with the strike through. So was that something we want to look at in the future? Did it fall out for a reason? And how much are we, are we actually able to accomplish? Are we being reasonable in what we put on the plate? So, and hopefully, this is also a way for folks to see at a glance what's coming up at a meeting or where it's headed. Where is it headed from this facilities? Is it moving on to policy? And then do folks want to show up at a particular meeting because something on that ballot list is important to them? So hopefully, people will find this useful.
So we crossed out, we had the workshop on the handbook. Is the handbook ready or will, you know, not quite ready or?
It is ready, and I was thinking we posted it, but now that you're asking, I don't remember if we posted it. So I'm going to look real quick while we're sitting right here, I don't think we posted it. No, we didn't post it, and I, so thank you for bringing that up, because I had lost that off my list, so we are going to post that on the school board webpage, probably as early as tomorrow morning.
And maybe do a reset, maybe do a send around.
Do a resend around to everyone, would that be helpful, happy to do that. Great.
Anything else? All right, excellent, um, and closely related, a review of some progress on strategic plan deliverables. In particular, spotlight on our goal number one, priority two, what color is that? Increased family and community engagement with schools. I had asked Dr. Turner to put a little bit of a light on this and share the work that's being done because this was right up there with one of our number one priorities, and I think there's been a tremendous amount of effort put into this already this year, and I wanted to get a chance to talk about it, so back to you.
Uh, so, as Penny stated, we're, we're going to kind of try to have a standing business item here where we just give you a check-in on how it's going with some of these deliverables that we, that we're working on. And so, family and community engagement was a big one for this year, in particular, getting our social media platform off, off the ground. So we shared with you some, you know, kind of basic data, that, so the my newsletter was one, and, and then the social media platform was the other, so we've shared just some very quick data with you of what kind of reach we're seeing with the newsletter, and then also with our social media presence, what our audience breakdowns looks like, what I thought was super interesting about our social media present are the towns that people are come from, who are following and regularly engaging with our posts. I found that to be extremely interesting. That other breaks out to folks kind of all over southern Maine, so that was pretty cool. Eighty-six thousand Facebook views in the last thirty days is pretty good, particularly for a new page, so we're pretty happy with that. What should not be terribly surprising for everyone is that our Facebook page is much more popular than our Instagram page. If you kind of understand the demographics of folks who tend to use those two tools, folks in the demographic of school age, parents tend to gravitate a little bit more, particularly the older, like me, gravitate a little bit more towards Facebook, and the younger crew, more like our students, tend to gravitate a little bit more towards Instagram. So it's not terribly surprising to kind of see that playing out as it is so far, as well as the age distribution and gender distribution of our Facebook users and followers do tend to follow what we see for accounts like ours, so fairly in line with what we would expect. I think the important thing to remember with both of these items is that this was the first step. This, this first foray into social media, the biggest thing we were trying to do in this first quarter is just get our schools used to sending things and having it posted, because that is not the, the, the standard of the district for a long time has been anti-social media and not to be posting things on social media. So it is a pretty big culture shift to be asking teachers, staff, students and parents to be producing content to be put out on social media, so our first step was just to build some comfort with posting that. And so Kathy has done a fantastic job building a system that makes it very easy for folks to load things up for us to then post. So that's been sort of activity number one, is setting those expectations and setting those routines so that people are regularly grabbing the content that we need. We're trying right now about fifty-fifty of kind of good news, interesting things that are happening in schools, and fifty percent news, things we want the public to know. So for every picture, today's was a, was the kindergarten at Wolf's neck farm. You're going to see, and here are our school lunch menus, so we're trying to do a mix of those two things. So that's where we've started. Next steps in development is to start doing work with our admin and our staff around what, what makes a social media post that draws in interaction, right, so as we're doing the, I call it the cute kids, and then the news, we want them engaging with both, and there are methods that you use that make it more likely that people will engage with, with your, with your posts, that social media savviness. So our first step was, just send us stuff, now we're going to start working on, here's how you take a great picture, here's how you tell a great story, here's the great tagline. So those are sort of our big next steps, and then the other piece we have to look at is sort of the role of the superintendent newsletter, it used to be that that was kind of the only thing going out, you know, site-wide, but then I went to do my superintendent newsletter, and I, I do a section called Where's Shanda? Because people are very interested, make, want to make sure the superintendent is around a lot of things, so I try to take all pictures of all the places I go, and I put it in there, and I realized so many of those pictures had already been put on social media, because either I or someone else sent them to Kathy, and Kathy was posting them on social media. So it felt very repetitive to me, we still did it, I get emails from people that they love it, so that's my sign that I should keep going with it. But we do need to kind of think as the year goes on, what is the role of that newsletter? And what's our role of social media, and just be thinking intentionally about how we're using each to its most impactful, in the most impactful way, so that's kind of where we're headed as the year goes on.
First off, I wanted to say, I really liked the superintendent's newsletter. I think it's really well done and, and, yeah, it's right here. I think it's just really well done, it's really attractive, and it's fun, I look forward to it. The other question I had is, what is the, the process for posting? How, who's the gatekeeper, how does that, just from my own experience somewhere else? It's hard to get people to contribute, and then you don't want them to go straight to social media, you want to have a clearinghouse. How, how are we doing that here?
Absolutely, thank you for asking that, so right now Kathy Martin, who is our Director of Curriculum and Staff Development, is our primary gatekeeper to R2, so she has an extensive experience with doing social media for school systems, and so she was willing to kind of step in and, and get it started, particularly in the systems that we put forward to help people then post. So she is the primary gatekeeper at the moment, and, and what she did is she actually built a Google Slides that has a slide for each school and each department, and essentially what she said, is she worked with the admin team, and she said, anything you have going, take the picture and drop it in this slides. Because even dropping it in a folder, sometimes people felt like it got lost, but here's your slide, if you've got text, put the text on there to tell me, put it on this slide, and then when I put it on social media, I'm going to take it off that slide and put it in this other section, so you know I've used it, and now we're ready for new content. So part of the routines we've built is part of every admin team, we give five minutes in the beginning to say, hey, do we have fresh content from you, if not, here's your chance, go drop it in. The expectations from there, in addition to that, so anyone who wants to send things in has to go through the principal, the principal's double-checking, we want to make sure we have media permissions on any children that we are putting in pictures or videos or anything that we're posting, and being respectful of that, so our, our principals are a lens to be checking that, and then we do, particularly in those pictures that have kids up close, and we're identifying them, we're double-checking those permissions as well before then we put them out. We do have people kind of, for, for the first time in the last couple of weeks, actually contacting Kathy or our office directly and saying, hey, here's this picture from my thing, can I have it posted? We go back through their principal or their supervisor, just to make sure that everything's okay with that, and then we push it into the Google Slides, so that everybody, everything's right there, the whole admin team can see it, and they can kind of give feedback as we're moving it along.
So I assume Kathy is tracking how much time she's devoted.
She is, yes.
Because I, I, I would guess it's going to grow, well, I would love to see it grow, let's put it that way, hopefully it will. How does, how do we populate the news sections on the website, how does, when we put something up as recent news, how does that get there?
Uh, so our web manager, Jen Testa, puts news there, so generally speaking, she's watching all of the school news, school newsletters, as well as my newsletter, and then any email that I send out, or it comes out district-wide, usually we're either telling her, hey, can you put that there, or she's checking with us, saying, hey, this sounds like a news item, should I put that here? She's really great about, about, even when I forget, and it definitely should be news, she's the one saying, hey, I'm going to put this on news, that's where you want it, right, and I'm like, oh yeah, thank you, I forgot.
Great.
So Jen's handling that piece, and I think your point about Kathy's time is so important, because I am trying to be pretty protective of her time and let her focus on curriculum and instruction in a way that maybe we haven't in the last couple of years, so she has launched it. Again, part of the process over the second half of this year is going to be kind of, then sort of pushing responsibilities. I'm seeing some of that coming towards my office and my admin assistant, who's so excited to get started with all of that, and, and sharing some of the responsibilities within the central office team a little bit more. But for the launching so far, we just wanted to have one person at the helm who had, who had experience with it, and then as time goes on, we're going to kind of share the responsibility a little bit more as it grows.
Great, thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, because I wrote the same thing down, tracking time, sort of value of time on communication, community engagement, training that's needed, expertise, like we have people doing stuff on the website, we have Kathy on, on social media. I know it's, we talked about alumni work, you know, we continue to talk about things around engaging the community and communicating well, and at some point, there's potential, a tipping point for a conversation around if we're spending these dollars in all this staggered way, are we taking people away from the jobs they're really good at? And should we be funding someone with expertise in a different way? So I'd be curious about that, to keep an eye on that as well, I think Fran has a question. Sam?
Uh, just want to put in my two cents that I would hope we would never rely on social media alone for our communication. I think there are very valid moral objections to using the meta-platform, and I want to make sure that our community always has a non-meta way to access our information.
Thank you, Sam, and I was thinking the same thing when you were talking about the newsletter, I think for, for many reasons, repetition is not a bad thing, and we, we don't want everything in one bucket at any rate, so we probably will always have email users who won't be seeing that online. Others? Fran?
I do, I'm amazed, and how many people still don't even have computers? And, and, I mean, I listen to them all day long, and that's why I have a job, but the point is that, you know, this is one source of communication, and keeping in mind, you know, the audience, that when you're looking at the numbers between August and December, it looks like it's about the same people. Hopefully it'll grow, I mean, but it could be limited because a lot of people don't have the equipment. So the information getting to the public would be, is always a problem, no matter where I go, that's, that's trying to resolve that, you know, that a lot of people just don't have access.
Gary?
Small follow-up too, it would be good, I, just my own opinion, that we look to enhance the website to include more of this information too, because ultimately, what we really want to do is drive people to our website. If we had a choice between social media and our website, if we could make the website be the key, because that's where all the other information is about the district, and if, it's, it's the kind of thing where you train, you, you train the public to look in a certain place, and I'm a little concerned that if our social media presence becomes too good, then they miss all the other information that is routinely being added to the website. That's because they won't be seeing that, they won't be visiting that for the same, so duplication is good, is provided, but I want, I would hate to see the website not flourish because the emphasis is being put on social.
Thanks, Gary. Others? Just like to put in my plug for the, my favorite picture I've seen so far, which is the, one of the school buses up on that lift, so if, if that has only appeared through that, through that route, that might be one to, to get out there.
That was in my newsletter and on social, and got five shares, Maggie and I were looking at it today, like five or six shares. It's gotten more shares than most posts on our, on our social.
It was very uplifting.
Yes. Well, it's a, it was actually a well-taken photograph and, and compelling, and we've been talking about a bus lift and talking about a bus lift, and it's very expensive, and like, what does that mean? And to see a full-size bus up in the air was like, oh wow, that's, that's what that means. I know, that's why you need a quality bus lift, Misty, because somebody has to go underneath it. All right, moving on. Next up, just wanted to leave a little bit of time for folks who attended the Maine School Management Association's Fall Conference. We had an outstanding showing, three admin members were there, Dr. Turner, David and Kathy, as well as six of our board members for some or all of the days, October twenty-third and twenty-fourth. We just wanted to open it up to folks who attended, who might be interested in sharing maybe one or two things that really stood out to them at the conference, no pressure.
Me, please.
Yes, you.
This was my first one, because last year I was sick and I couldn't go, and I found it very informative, it was sort of energizing. I really appreciated the keynote speaker, made me think of things differently, because I, you know, it's my, in my second year of my first term, so I still feel like a newbie in a way, and I found the workshops really helpful and informative, and it was nice to be with other people doing the same work, you know, so you could hear what was happening in other districts, and I just really enjoyed the whole process.
Great, thanks. Anybody else want to share about their field trip to the conference, Gary?
This wasn't my first year there, I've been there multiple times, and I never failed to come away with something that was worth being there. I thought the keynote speaker was great, and his workshops that followed his speech was really, I thought was really well, well worth your time to take, if, if for no other reason but it, it makes you excited about the work again, shows you what's possible. Because he, I mean, he's from a little tiny district, and to accomplish, and that's possibly why he's able to accomplish the things he does, because he has so few kids and staff to deal with in comparison, but it was just, it was really inspiring to hear all of that. The other thing I took away was how few things came out of the legislature compared to what I thought we were going to be looking at. When I went to the legislative review, you know, you kind of, you're used to seeing fifty things that we have to pay attention to, and suddenly there really aren't that many, and there were very few items, even on the national, that they were promoting, so. Yeah, I thought it was well worth attending, collective bargaining was a lot of what we've heard before. And I miss Tom Trenthal not being there, he, he does a really good bargaining presentation, and it was kind of too bad he wasn't there, but if I had a chance to go to Europe, I would do, or Caribbean, I would do, so, and I would not have been there, so, anyway.
All right, fair enough, anybody else? Fran?
Yes, okay, I enjoyed it also, and I did want to make a note, the end note speaker was a graduate of, went to, attended school in Gray, and I thought that that was good, I wish I had time to talk to her, but, and she spoke about the A1, what's hap, A1.
AI.
AL, A1, AL, and what's happening in, in the world with that, it was very informative, I thought she did good. So, some of the classes I took, because I think the public should know what some of the things we, we talk about. So one of the first ones I took was called Early Adapters, and it was York and Kidery is committed to meeting the needs of children three to five, improving educational opportunities and accommodations and services for children with special needs through the child find and referral process. And number two, the headline of, the second one I took was headline of the recent court cases on school issues. So this case Mohammed versus Taylor, which is from Maryland, probably most of the classes that dealt with the law mentioned this case. And basically, it was parents of elementary students sued the school district under the free exercise clause for not permitting them to opt out their children out of instruction involving LGBTQ themed books that they object to on religious grounds, so that was, that was. So that was, that was a case that was floating around most of the day, two days. The third one I went to, it was very interesting, because the title, you've got to be kidding, The Wild, Wild World of Special Ed. That was the title of the course, so of course I had to go to that one. And the topics included, how long is a school day? That's debatable, because of special needs students, some can't, this particular student, these are all court cases by the way, wasn't able to have a school during the day and needed night school instruction. So that was an interesting case. Also, transportation duties never end, do, transportation duties never end for bus drivers, need to enter buildings to pick up students at, at the door, and enter two stories up and carry them down the stairs to the bus. Another interesting case. And then, so that was the law area I took. Then I took the First Amendment and Public Meetings meeting, and the question was, can the public disrobe at a school board meeting, which has been happening? So, so I forgot to use the big, big, what is it, whatever the term is, use your words. Yeah, use your words. Okay. The next one I took was state school funding, and that one, she said this is, it's very simple, you know, it shouldn't be difficult at all. So I already, already said, why is this a two-part course? You know? And that had to deal with following the ED 279 program. Everything and anything I want to know is in a booklet that thick that she gave me. And, and so, and she never got to complete the courses, because it was just far too much. And it had to do with hers, all the material, it was just almost impossible, and everyone in the room had all kinds of questions. And the last one I took was called Between a Rock and a Hot Place, and that is Title Nine. And, and so, the Supreme Court is now in session, trying to make the Supreme Court decision. And the thing I got out of that was, we should operate what is the best interest of our district. So that's pretty much, you know, letting the public know what kind of things we talk about when we go to these, these sessions, and it could be interesting. Anything anyone wants, any further information about, of course, I'd be more than happy to share it with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. I also attended, I really enjoyed the keynote speaker. I would encourage folks to just go search the Crickets, the Go Crickets. Tiny school district, really talked about things that were not terribly expensive in just ways that this guy engaged the community that were a ton of fun. For example, they have teachers sign, like, they have athletes sign, you know, a college commitment, they put down the backdrop, they give them a T-shirt, they are like, they call in the classroom, the second graders run in, like, we want you to be our teacher. They make a big deal of it, you know, really fun, not complicated, but, but still takes some effort. I actually found it a little inspiring and then overwhelming, and thought like, this is just so staggering. And in the smaller session, he did say, this took 13 years to build. So I went from excited to, I'm going to cry, to like, okay, some perspective, 13 years, you know, you're not going to do this overnight. But there were things, his session, he then spent a lot of time just saying, here's things you can implement, and just rapid fire. The other thing I actually enjoyed the most was an opportunity to spend time with so many board members. The weird mics and the seating and the cameras and the voting is, feels clunky, it's not my best. Stumble over my words sometimes, and to just sit around a table and enjoy some meals with board members outside of a meeting, talk about what we heard, compare notes. We ended up really spending a lot of the time together as a group, and that felt great. In fact, and then Fran and I on the phone the next week, looking up the Supreme Court dockets together and comparing our notes, and what did we hear, and what's going to happen next. And it's nice, it's nice to do that. So I appreciate folks taking the time out to attend, that is a huge lift, and I know not everybody can break away for two full days, so appreciate that. Moving on to new business, I am going to recuse myself for this agenda item and ask that Lauren take the wheel.
So the next new business item is to consider an exception allowable under Section 5 of Policy BCC nepotism. So I would take a motion on this agenda item.
I move that we approve an exception under Section 5 of Policy BCC nepotism to allow the superintendent to hire an immediate family member of a school board member who has been nominated as a substitute school bus driver.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Seeing noted.
Any discussion?
Oh.
Do I have a little?
Yeah, let's talk about it. So this is Penny's mother has applied for a substitute school bus driver.
Fully, she is a fully certified, ready to drive the full big bus driver, willing to be emergency on-call, a bus driver is sick in the morning, can you come in, substitute?
So we went from fully staffed in transportation to, we're down to bus drivers now, so this is timely. And, I mean, this bargaining unit wouldn't even come up for like, two years anyway, so it's not.
And as a substitute, she wouldn't be part of the bargaining unit anyway. Yeah. She would be an employee at will.
Okay. So I'll take a vote. All in favor? Okay. So I'll turn it back to you, Fran.
Next up is moving into some policies. So we have a batch to consider here from the I section, IHBAC, IHBEA, and IJOA.
I move we approve policies IHBAC, IHBEA, and IJOA as a batch.
Second.
All right, just, Fran?
I don't agree. I, I apologize. I would like to speak with the child find policy individually, so maybe the other two, but I need, I, I would like to speak to that one.
Well, we, we can still, we can still discuss and take questions and speak to the policy with, with the motion on the table.
Okay, as long as I, okay.
Yeah, sure. Do you want to start with that one?
Child find, yeah.
Yeah.
Has it been seconded, I'm sorry?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I've been, because of going to this conference, and so many of the classes included what's happening now in education, with having, you know, from Bert to Tondi leave the school district, it made me think a lot and do a little, little research on it. And I saw that, you know, the Public War was created in '23 for three and four-year-olds, as we've spoken before at other board meetings, for those who require special education services. And we're shifting them from the CDS to local school districts. Also, two-year-olds in need of special services now. So, and that's supposed to go into effect between '27 and '28. So this will remarkably increase the number of students the taxpayers will be paying for. MSAT 51 is looking to, that's in Cumberland, I think, is looking to build a new pre-K1 school. So it's not even K1 anymore, now it's called pre, P-K1, I assume it's pre-K1. Skow Keegan has built a childcare center attached to its school district, costing millions that were raised through private and public donations. When I asked how much the first year of operation cost, I was told millions. The public should know what is going on in its district. Also, I mentioned earlier, York and Kidery has a similar program. I believe parents would be losing the care of their children to the state. How can we, the taxpayers afford to pay for this? So these are thoughts that ran through me, through my mind, as we're approaching what seems to be a direction that most school districts will eventually be going through. I understand we're not, but, you know, it, it's right there in the horizon for us, will be, you know, all school districts will have. So I think it's a very important consideration. It's not to deny, but again, education is supposed to be education, and not, you know, a lot of social work for ages and then the state legislature. If they're going to do this, enforce this on the district, that we start educating from two-year-olds on, I, I would think that they need to pay for it. We shouldn't be putting this burden on the taxpayers, as the, now other districts are experiencing that right now. That's my opinion.
Thank you. So the version on the, the table we have here is age five.
It's changing.
Oh, sorry, hang on, I got to get to my red line. Just kidding. It's like, I thought we'd, we'd moved on from that. So I need, hang on, I got to click on the right one. So, oh, I still don't have it. While I look for it, I'm going to ask Dr. Turner to, that's the one I keep looking on. Do you want to speak to this while I try to get it?
I would be happy to. So, so yeah, so everything that Fran shared is, is correct. This is part of the CDS process, where the school district under state law is going to be responsible for special education services for children ages three and four. The two-year-old is, is part of a transition program, we can talk more detailed about. As of right now, that, that will not live in the ED 279 formula, that is going to live in a separate formula that is committed at 100% funding from the state at this time. So we have already started, we, we engaged with the state to do a phased adoption process. So instead of kind of doing everything at once, that we would start with just four-year-olds, we already have 90 out of about 120 to 140 kids. Our, our class sizes tend to be about 120 to 140 right now, 90 of them in our pre-case. We felt like taking on four-year-olds as an experimental year might be a nice transition for us. So far, the state has reimbursed the, the money we are getting for the state at the moment is outpacing our costs. That may or may not. So that is, we're taking more in than what this program is costing us. I don't anticipate that necessarily will be, be the case long-term. But our, what we're hearing from our colleagues is that when expenses do become more than what they're getting from the state, after they share that with the state, they get an additional payment, that the commitment to cover at 100% is to cover at 100%, and they are seeing checks beyond what the agreements are when those expenses outpace the income. Can I, so that, so the law is stated that that fund does live separate from ED 279 and will be covered at 100%? Could the law change? Of course it could. And, and I'm sure I will be keeping you all up to date as that, as that is. But as of right now, the law is, the state pays for it at 100%, that is what we are experiencing. We have taken on four-year-olds in an agreement with the state, and therefore we need to update our child find policy to change age five to age four as part of that process.
So to be clear, we're changing our policy to match what we have already agreed to, are contracted to do and are doing actively.
Correct.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor? Nope, sorry, we're in the batch. I just, it must be past eight o'clock. Any other questions or discussions on all of the policies in this batch? Saying none, all in favor? Opposed? Did you say in favor, Jim?
No, I'm staying.
Are you unable to vote?
I just have a, a fundamental conflict with the child. I, I just am a little uncomfortable of the state government raising kids at three years old. It's just a, yes, I've been on the school board, I've realized just to what extent the massive footprint of state government is on raising, on running the schools, and I'm just uncomfortable with the state government taking a larger role in raising our children. And I'm just, I can't vote for it.
So that would be a no?
It'd be a no, I guess.
Okay, so it's.
I'm standing over the whole vote.
So should.
I'll, I'll vote no if that will make paper.
Yes, I, I, well, it's just, it just is, you know? All right, so.
I just have a fundamental disagree with the policy.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to redraw my vote, because he's, I, I was thinking of the whole packet. I, I don't, I can't, I, I can't support the child find program. So that, I only raised yes, because it was the whole group. But if we're voting individually, that's why I said originally, if we can vote individually, I will not be voting for child find.
Okay, so, hold up, could we, would anyone care to amend the motion?
The motion up here, the second, we had the discussion, let's vote. You want to vote yes or no? Let's do it.
All right, so let's do this again. We had agreed to move forward as a group, if you have issue with anything in the group, feel, you know, vote your conscience. So all in favor? Opposed? Perfect. Did you get that, Maggie? Great.
I think, yeah.
All right, moving into committee reports, facilities.
So facilities met on October 8th. We went over our projects list, mostly driveway patching and ongoing repair around our buildings. Over 147 work orders have been completed since the last meeting. We got an update on our SRF air quality project. We considered having like, a full board presentation from Mechanical Services at the close of that. We talked about the need for a new high school athletic scoreboard. We've started receiving quotes and exploring possibilities of local business sponsorships. We talked about food services, there's a lot of momentum and enthusiasm due to the staffing positions being extra filled this year, looking into grant opportunities and capital plans for improving the nutrition. We received a transportation report going over all things transportation, overall morale is good. We talked about, like, how many buses, how many vans, what vehicles do we have, what's the expected lifespan, where are they at, where does this fit in the overall big picture of what we want that puzzle piece of our district to look like? We talked about legislation, legislative impacts, and covered with some job descriptions, and then ended with a policy about pest management.
Questions for facilities?
The transportation report is pretty interesting. It's in the minutes in, in our attachments and everywhere. It's, I had, no, I didn't know how many pickup trucks and trailers we had, it was, yeah, go read it.
Fran?
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm just looking at the salad wrapper. I'm not sure how this, this works. I know we have to supply, you know, the bar and all that, but I understand that Hanifert is expanding and including that because of the students, I heard, you know, because of the frequency. Is there, it's not to deny that we have it here as well, because a lot of people, a lot of the students won't go to the Hanifert. But I'm talking about, have we looked at that factor in determining how much improvement we need to do with that bar area? I guess that's, was that part of any conversation?
No, I don't think what Hanifert is offering was part of the conversation about what we offer, and only juniors and seniors can leave during the day, so that leaves fifth, I believe they're offering more of these options at the middle and high school, which is fifth through 12th grade. So, and I, it's not new equipment, it's sort of reopening things that we were not staffed, that we have had in the past, that staffing was making really difficult to have. So I think that's how we came to have it back.
Well, that clarifies that I was looking at new equipment and stuff, but that's not part of it, no. Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else for facilities? Great, finance.
Finance met on October 22nd.
We had a very substantive, uh, discussion on some big stuff. First, we gave feedback on the budget process. There's some desire to, uh, compress the timeframe a little bit so that it doesn't eat up, whatever it was, 19 workshops. Try to get it a little bit more focused so that everybody kind of knows what to expect in each meeting. And, uh, David and Chanda took that feedback and are gonna present a sort of new timeline to the finance committee, uh, at our next meeting. If you are curious about that, you are welcome to attend. Uh, we also, uh, discussed substantively the, uh, ED 279 EPS formula report. It was a great discussion. I think everybody learned a little bit. I would encourage people to read the linked document, or at least the first 15 pages, which is the policymaker summary. It's EPS report. It's linked under, uh, item B in the finance minutes. Basically, the legislature passed a law tasking a group of education experts at the University of Southern Maine to examine the EPS formula, which is essential programs and services is what EPS stands for. And it's the way that the state determines, uh, what the essential spend is that each school district should make in order to, uh, on the one hand, earn, uh, the state money. And then, on the other hand, uh, figure out how much, uh, above what the state is giving is, uh, required from the local townspeople. And, uh, these people did an excellent job examining the issues with the ED 279 formula. Uh, there's all sorts of stuff that hasn't changed since 2004. As you can imagine, the world has changed a little bit in the last 21 years, but our formula has not. Uh, the opportunity is now to make recommendations using that report and our own experience to our local representatives, uh, who are going to likely be taking up the EPS formula in the next legislative session, which starts in January. Uh, so we have a draft letter that we're considering, uh, as a finance committee, that we are going to workshop at our next meeting and then forward to the board as a whole to consider. If you'd like to get a head start on that, the sample letter is also, uh, linked in the minutes. And I think there's an opportunity for us to, uh, you know, try to get our representatives and state senators, I think there's five of them that are touched by the district, uh, to represent, uh, our sort of experience on the ground. Uh, there's a, a few, you know, major things such as, you know, social workers are not considered in the EPS formula despite the fact that every district now has them and considers them vital, uh, et cetera, et cetera. There's all, all sorts of things that I think we have an opportunity to comment on and make sure that, uh, they hear our voices. So, I would encourage people to do that investigation. Uh, and then finally, uh, we looked at the expense reports and revenue reports. Also, uh, kudos to David in the business office for some great new ways of showing our spend over the course of the year so far. And, uh, we considered a number of D policies, which are the ones that touch finance. And we made some recommendations to the policy committee to consider at their next meeting.
Questions, comments for finance? Fran?
Just a comment. Um, I, I think that we should invite our legislators, um, in sooner than later and, um, um, to, you know, um, get this ball rolling and with the formula change because it is the legislative that has to do it, no one else. And, um, um, so, I would think that we would wanna put it on our calendar sometime soon.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Sam. And who's next? Personnel?
So, the personnel committee, uh, met October 8th. And we only had one item for a new business, and that was to review the legislative impacts. There were two of them. One was the EPL, earned paid leave, and the second was minimum pay for reporting to work. And, um, the conclusion is at this time, uh, nothing requires immediate action or attention from the school board. Then, um, we went into two executive sessions. The first, um, to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to, um, to state statute 6D. And then, um, the second one was to enter ex, to executive session, um, discuss the evaluation of the superintendent that's pursuant to MRSA 6A. So, and that concluded the meeting.
All right, questions? Sam?
Um, I'm assuming that the executive session regarded the upcoming teacher contract. Do we have a timeline for when we're gonna try to start approaching negotiations on the next contract?
I, yes, we do. We have, um, tentatively scheduled in December, right? Is our first, um, meeting to, um, kick it off.
We, uh, if I could just add, we did have a, um, productive first meeting, pre-meeting, checking in with, um, Dr. Turner and, um, myself and Lauren as head of personnel and the union, um, president on just, you know, getting the ball rolling and looking at the calendar. And it was, um, yeah. And setting a timeline for intent to bargain. So, I think we're actually ahead, ahead of the game even by earliest standards, so. Anything else for personnel? All right, thank you, Lauren. Uh, next, we have curriculum. And that would be last month because they didn't, they didn't meet today.
We met on October 1st.
Yes.
So, it's, it's been a few minutes. The, pretty much the entire meeting, and I assume that we'll have Kathy Martin come back and actually present this work, uh, from her department's standpoint. So, I'll just do highlights for a moment. The entire meeting was around the curriculum review process, instructional program selection process, content area review cycle, and, and looking to move from a five-year, uh, curriculum review to a seven-year curriculum review. She has some pretty comprehensive information about why that would be beneficial and how that would work. Uh, she reviewed the current curriculum review process. It hasn't changed largely since October 2017. And did an overview on content areas that have been reviewed in recent years. And looked at the main Department of Education DOE process. Presented us, updated staff shot up where the district stands in comparison to DOE legislative curriculum. Noted, science is the only content area not completed last year. Work on this area will continue in the upcoming year. So, as a committee, we reviewed the new, the new cycle idea, moving to seven years instead of the five. There are some ma, and she's got some major advantage benefits to doing that. Again, this, there's a lot of detail in this. There were several documents that she presented that, um, I'm sure she'll be invited back to present to us as a whole. But the i, the benefits as presented would be staff can see clearly what content areas to focus for every year. Elementary teachers who teach multiple content areas only have one area of new implementation at a time. Instructional material purchases will be spread out over seven years instead of five, making budget forecasting more manageable. Implementation will be more effective, allowing time to teach new standards, collect data, and make informed decisions. And the district will be aligned with main DOE review cycle, ensuring consistency. It was a lot of material presented in a one-hour meeting. So, uh, it was one of the heaviest curriculum meetings I've been to as far as content and amount of detail. So, uh, it'll be great to have her come and actually present all this to you, to you in person rather than have me try to explain and try to remember how she described what she described. But that was the intent. Uh, next meeting is, was going to be tonight, but, uh, it got postponed to December.
I'm sure she'd be, would be comfortable with me sharing. Kathy had a situation. She needed to be a parent, um, today and tonight. And so, we, we opted to move the content of tonight's curriculum meeting to another night and, and have her talk about some of this stuff another time. So, she will be back with us very presently.
So, those of you on the committee might wanna just keep an eye on emails because I did offer the opportunity to possibly extend that meeting and maybe start at five instead of 5:30 if we needed additional time to make up for the co, tonight's content, plus December's content. Just so you know.
Questions, comments? Fran?
I do. On the math, um, program, I thought once we adopted this new math program that, um, everyone was pretty much on board. All the schools were kind of united. But I'm reading that, um, it's a two to three year, and then, uh, middle school is beginning year one. I, didn't that organize everything, that program that we purchased? Or was it just for specific, uh, grade, like high school and middle school? I can't remember what we did with that.
Specific to grade level. So, K-2 adopted first, followed by Dunn School, followed by middle school. So, middle school is in year one.
I'll have to look at my notes. I, 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 I thought we were, you know, I'll look at my notes, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. That brings us to policy. And Sharon is not with us tonight. Is there a member of the policy meeting who was willing to jump in on behalf of Sharon? I think mostly we passed policies, I think that were covered. Sam, do you have any thoughts that you'd be willing to share on policy? I'm not on the committee.
I would encourage people to take a look at the way that we're gonna be reviewing, uh, policies going forward. People may remember that, uh, we spent a good deal of time updating our policy book, making sure that we had all the policies required by law and that we didn't have any that were out of date. Uh, we have largely got our policy book, uh, in working order now. And so, our plan of attack going forward is a little more nuanced and strategic, trying to respond to the needs of the district as well as, uh, you know, grouping like with like so that we can look at a bunch of things in a batch. If you have any objections to the planning, now would be the time to make those heard. Uh, other than that, we, uh, reviewed a number of policies, a few of which we approved here tonight, but a few of which, uh, we did not put forward to, uh, the board for consideration because we didn't feel that there were any concerns or necessary edits. For instance, the IHBA individual education programs, um, the IAHB double-A referral process. Like, we capitalized child find, but did not need to come in front of the board again. And, uh, we didn't, there were a number of policies that were held over, uh, to the next agenda. The, uh, viewing of policy, um, takes a lot of wordsmithing and sometimes takes more time than we would like it to. But, uh, I appreciate the committee's willingness to be thorough and thoughtful.
Anybody wanna weigh in on policy? Good. All right, thank you for jumping in with, absolutely no heads up whatsoever, Sam. Um, and nothing from me on school board chair report. So, we will jump to a robust superintendent report.
Tried to put lots of background in for you so I don't have to take a ton of time on it, hopefully. Uh, the first thing that is not in the written report that I feel the need to embarrass him is tonight is David's birthday, so please say happy birthday to him on your way out as he's had a very long day with me today and maybe not how he planned to spend his birthday. So, happy birthday, David, to all of us. We appreciate you. Uh, so, item number one, I wanted to just take, uh, this was a, a resend to, um, add to my report to talk about food insecurity. We've had some requests from a couple of board members on that. And Penny had reached out earlier in the week, or actually, that was last week, um, about it. And so, just to take a moment to sort of update the board, um, we do have a number of structures for food assistance for families in our district that we have had for a long time. And so, as the federal government is, is in shutdown and, and people aren't getting their, um, food benefits that they normally would, we are activating those networks that already exist. So, we're, we're really trying to be strategic about not creating new programs or new things. We have people that do this work, and they do this work very well. And so, instead, we're just saying to them, how can we help you? Um, so, today, you may see, today? Yeah, yesterday. It's been a long week already, it was today. Um, today, we sent out a district-wide, this is information that has kind of gone out to each school through their newsletters, our school has shared it with families. Um, but we sent kind of a community-wide message, um, to help family, to sort of like point families in the right direction if they need help, but also to sort of speak to those folks who are asking, how can they help? Because we do have so many people that are reaching out and saying, how can we help kids? We don't want kids to go hungry. Um, so, we so appreciate that. So, in that document, um, which we did, uh, we're gonna add to the, uh, agenda for tonight, uh, add to the, um, attachments for tonight so it can be in, in with the board record. Um, we talk about what we do here at school, which includes our free breakfast and free lunch programs, as well as an extensive backpack program, um, that was sort of originally started by Donna Skilling. And she still is hugely involved in that. And a huge thank you to her for all the work she does to help feed kids in our districts. Um, but that is a backpack full of food that children can take home on weekends and nights when they're not with us. So, we make sure that they don't go hungry when they leave us also. Um, also, huge shout-out to Karen Light and the, um, community service group here, as well as the Excel program, all of whom are involved in helping to organize and distribute, um, that food to our kids. Additionally, um, our schools all, all have mechanisms where they provide snacks for kids. Every single principal has a snack drawer. In fact, earlier tonight, when I walked into Sadie's office to drop something off, she opened hers and said, I restocked, are you hungry? Um, so, they are actively, when, when they see kids who need snacks, no matter whether they qualify for SNAP or not, they're putting food in their hands, usually out of their own pockets. Um, a, a lot of our folks will use the donations, like you'll hear later tonight, for those sorts of things, to, to fund breakfast things or, or snack things so that when kids are showing up hungry, if we don't have free breakfast or free lunch going, we have food that we can, we can press into kids' hands. So, um, we're really focused on making sure, at least when they're with us, that kids aren't hungry and trying to help provide that support at home. In our community degree, Community Food Pantry and the New Gloucester Food Pantry have been hugely helpful. Uh, they do a lot of their work with Good Shepherd and Food Bank. So, it's important to kind of note their role, as well as, um, you know, Hanifert has a big role in helping. So, that's kind of what is available. Our social workers and guidance counselors are working with families all the time, whether they qualify for SNAP benefits or not. We, we are able to connect with families who need support. That's part of, um, the board's support of our regular education social workers, allows our folks to work with all families, not just kids with IEPs, to make sure that, um, we're aware families are struggling and to provide that help. So, they've been in constant contact with families through these structures and, and helping them get hooked up with the resources that they need. Our schools are doing food drives. They do them every year. Um, so, you'll see those happening. I think, um, Russell School and Memorial School did theirs a couple of weeks ago. I think Dunn School is doing theirs as part of parent-teacher conferences. Um, so, we certainly encourage people to, you know, watch out for your school newsletters for that. Um, and then, in addition, we're in constant communication with our backpack program organizers, with the Gray Community Food Pantry, with the New Gloucester Food Pantry, to say what you, what do you need. And that includes this morning, talking with someone over at the Gray Community Food Pantry this morning, you know, asking, can we help? Right now, what they are telling us, and what I mean, right now, it is 8:37 on November 5th. They're saying that right now, they're pretty well-resourced, that at this time of year, the last quarter of the year, people tend to be making large donations, both of food and of funds. And so, right now, they're pretty well-resourced. The thing they may tap us for sooner rather than later is help storing because they have enough donations at store just starting to be a problem. And we said, we can help with that. So, um, if you come in my office and there's, you know, a case of macaroni and cheese, you'll know why. So, we absolutely said we can help with that or kind of what else, whatever else they need. And we sort of stand at the ready because we know we have this army of our, our boosters groups have come forward and talked to us, our parent, Patriot Parents have come forward. Uh, we have so many people, we have so many parents that have just said, how can we help? So, if and when those groups, the backpack program, Gray Community Food Pantry, New Gloucester Food Pantry, say, hey, you know what, our stores are getting low and we need help, we are ready to, to activate those networks of people that have said, how can we help? And see what we can do for those groups. So, um, I think it's a really tough situation at this moment. Um, I think we're meeting the needs of families, but that, that could change and will change as time goes on. And we will keep you posted.
By my work with volunteering at the Good Shepherd, they are always looking for volunteers there because obviously they are from the top down. So the reason why our local food pantries are so stocked is because of the Good Shepherd. So that's, they are the ones that get all the food to all of the 600 agencies across the state. So if anybody has time to volunteer there, that's the top of the food chain. So any time is appreciated. Their shifts are three hours, so it's not long, but I encourage you to go in and volunteer. It's very humbling.
Thank you, Misty.
And in the handout, we emailed out and will be posted on our social media and our website, there is a link to the page where you can volunteer or donate to Good Shepherd should you choose to do that.
Others? I'd just say, as a parent who's also a participant in the PTO and the arts boosters, and I went to athletics boosters this meeting this week, these groups are chomping at the bit and they're doing the work. The head of the PTO actually said, hold your brakes, and that woman has zero brakes. So she says that they have things for now, then they absolutely have it. Another thing that parent groups have been doing is getting food in front of kids. You don't need to identify, ask kids to identify themselves. We had 45 kids here this afternoon to prepare for you from 2:00 to 6:00. I mobilized a bunch of parents and we had food for all of them. So if you feed all of them, you're going to get everybody who is hungry. So I think we're also seeing sort of an uptick in awareness in that, which are things that these parent groups are already doing. So that was good to learn. All right.
Okay, moving on. There we go, moving on. So Number Two is to share with you about a non-school-sponsored out-of-country trip as per policy that was proposed tonight, but it's also in line with our policy before. Non-school-sponsored trips are something that we make the Board aware of, but it's not something that the Board has authority over. This is sort of every year, it's through what's called EF Tours, which is a professional tour company that does student group tours. Our teacher here who helps with that does a, essentially works with the kids to say, where do you want to go? And so they pick where the tour will be each year. This is the trip for 2027, because then that gives a long time for families to be able to save the money for their children to be able to go. So the trip that is planned for February 2027 is Netherlands, Belgium, and France, with an extension potentially to England. I will say, my child went on this exact trip with EF Tours last year, or two years ago, and it was fantastic. And even in the middle of a air traffic controller strike in Paris, and she got, I'm going to air quote for you, stuck in Paris for two extra days. I can't say enough about EF Tours and how well they handled that, and the kids were great. They had to volunteer, like half of them got to go home and half of them didn't, and she was like, oh, I'm staying here. So it was a great, great opportunity for her, and that was at no cost to us, and she got two extra days in Paris. So they do do a very good job. This is what they do. So this is the proposed tour, and the kids are going to start, you know, earning their money to go if they can.
This says Paris and Amsterdam. You listed different countries.
Correct.
Say that again.
Yeah, so this trip is going to the Netherlands, Belgium, France, with an extension to England potentially.
What age groups go?
High school.
High school.
Okay, moving on. What else do I have to do? Transportation update, we shared a little bit earlier, but we have had some changes. We are now down to school bus drivers in the driver department since the start of the school year. That has made things a little bit difficult. We did send a message out to everyone in the community about that. We have made a couple of changes since I last shared with you. We have switched around some routes. We've consolidated some routes. We're going to handle one bus route with vans. It means there are some kids that'll be kind of up and out a little bit earlier, which we don't love, but it's going to allow us a little bit more flexibility. Before, we were getting to the place where if two drivers were out, we were going to have to start canceling routes. Now we can survive three drivers being out before we have to cancel routes, and four drivers if our new bus substitute will come in. So we feel much more comfortable with that. Huge thank you to John and KJ for making that happen, and to our families for having some flexibility with us. I know it is not easy for them, but we're hoping to hire a few more bus drivers, and then this won't be a problem. Okay, so this is, I just kind of consolidated a report of grants and donations that we have received. These are ones that did not meet the threshold that require Board approval. And some of them are donations that we have gotten for years, so I'm reporting the Hannaford Help Schools program donations. We've been getting those for years, and they've never necessarily been reported, so I wanted to kind of make sure that those got highlighted, particularly right now, when so many of our schools are using it to help children with food security. So we've had an anonymous donor come forward, donate $2,000, a little over $2,000, to buy some performance robes for our chorus. So if you come to our chorus concerts, hopefully you'll see that level of professionalism is really appreciated. Retreat U.S. has adopted Dunn School, and that's going to help take care of our orchard up there and provide some orchard education. And then we have, most of our schools here have received Hannaford Help Schools. The high school just hadn't received their final dollar figure when this was published, so we will have that in the next agenda. They have since received that, but Hannaford Help Schools, each school has gotten a little bit. Most of them use that towards activities at the school, and as I said, like, you know, to fund like snack drawers and those sorts of things that kids might need at the school.
Questions, comments?
I do. It says, I'm sorry, just a minute. Oh, okay, yeah, I found it. In the second bullet on the four, and it, I guess you're looking at 1, 2, 3, fourth line. It talks about support, including providing maintenance to the orchard and education resources for the school. What education resources would that refer to?
So Retreat U.S. works with our staff, so we have a staff person there who's also our district wellness coordinator, who does most of our orchard education. So they work with him to provide education tools, like how to do lessons with kids about life cycle of trees, particularly orchards, how, you know, there's lots of science lessons that can then go in and be used with us, so they help schools kind of develop those lessons specific to their school, help kids participate in the care and maintenance of the orchard.
Okay.
Others? All right, that is a really nice, long list of donations.
New hires. So we have two new hires, Valencia Morrell, an EdTech 3, working out of Dunn School, and then Susannah Layton, who's going to start with us as an EdTech 1 in Memorial School. It says self-contained, that's a particular funding source coding under our special education funding. It means that they're going to be assigned to a classroom where the children are generally in a specialized setting all day long. And so Susannah is starting at Memorial School. We have a resignation of Lisa Ingram, bus driver in transportation, which we've spoken to a little bit already. And then we have two retirements. One I already mentioned, Cindy Worcester, retired as of October 2025, and we have the first of our end-of-year retirements. Karen Light is officially retiring June 2026. Her paperwork is in, and she doesn't even seem sad about it. And no, she is sad. She's excited, and we're excited for her. So wishing Karen all the best of luck, and we're just soaking up every minute with her until she's gone.
Super generous of Ms. Light to extend her time as to what had been potentially last year, but following an IV cohort, which are two-year classes through to completion. So very much appreciate that.
So it had nothing to do with Lucy being a senior?
Why stay?
The seniors feel very much that Karen stayed on just to see them to graduation. They feel very special.
Yes. Any, that is the L. Jim?
If I may, I'd like to publicly make a shout out to Maggie and Ms. Coulom of your staff. I had a letter from the IRS wanting some additional information, and one of them was the W-2 form, and they turned it around almost immediately. I was very appreciative.
All right, noted.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.